Is that the bill of the house?
Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a public hearing required for an ordinance to amend Canton Code Section 18-51B to increase the professional occupational tax from $200 to $300. Our regular council meeting will immediately proceed this hearing, which we didn't anticipate would take a minute or two probably. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on that issue? That's the professional occupational tax fees, lawyers and other professions that now are required to pay a minimum of $200. It will be increased to $300. Anyone wish to speak on that issue? If not, we will close that public hearing. It will be discussed a little later in our next meeting as well by the council. Okay, I would like to call a regular council meeting to order. This is October the 16th, 2014, and if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Bowden, finally, we just thank you for this evening and all that are here. We ask that you be with those that are unable to be here tonight as well. We ask that you continue to bless this nation and to watch over us and to help us tonight to make the right decisions for our city. All these things we pray.
I'm sure you're on our agenda as consideration to approve the agenda. Do we have any corrections?
Yes, sir. I'd like to add, under 9B, the discussion and possible action to the Marietta Road streetscapes additional project under 9B. And I would also like to add, so the public knows, that under the executive session, I will be bringing a personnel issue to the executive session.
Okay. Are there other changes? Mr. Burris?
Under the consent agenda, I would like to remove Cherokee County Arts Council from the blanket approval or denial and vote on that separately.
Well, I tell you what we'll do. We'll just remove item D, okay? And, oh, you wanted to vote on it. I'll vote separately, okay.
Everything separately because of conflict of interest.
Oh, I see. Ah, okay.
Mr. Marner?
I'm sorry?
You just want to break that way out to recuse yourself.
I want to recuse myself from voting on the arts center, but I can vote on everything else.
Okay.
Does she really have to recuse herself? Because I believe the, it is only required if there's a personal vested interest.
Actually, I don't think it's required.
Probably not technically right, but you are on the board, right?
I am on the board.
And maybe we'll be funding, going after funding, going to.
Say it other than joy and privilege.
I don't think she really has to know. She can if she wants to.
Yeah. We will pull that off in you and out and vote on it separately, okay? Just don't let me mess up when we get to that. I'm scratching here. Mr. Burris?
Yes, I'd like to add a council in a good second. It will be titled Political Signs.
Okay, are there any other changes or issues? Any other changes? If not, I'm going to take a motion to approve the agenda as amended, which includes that council introduced items number 11, Political Signs, the addition of personnel to our executive session, in which we will have been discussing litigation and personnel issues now. And we will remove Cherokee Arts Council off of the consent agenda and vote on it separately as far as the funding and agreement with them goes. Mary has a vote. Okay. Possible action 9B, Marietta Road project, additional project on that. Motion we have second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no, all members voted for motion. I'd like to welcome all of our guests and visitors here tonight. The first item that we have under 4A is the Community Policing Partnership Award to Mr. Casey Geiten, Chief of Alabama, I guess.
Mayor Hoggood, the council members, you've come, and I really sincerely appreciate the opportunity to make this presentation here tonight to Mr. Casey Geiten from Sosby's Funeral Home. Since arriving here approximately two and a half years ago, I've been very impressed with the business community, how they've reached out to the police department and insisted us on a number of occasions. The first situation we've been involved in here in Canton was National Night Out. We did, started that a couple of years ago. It's been a very successful event. And to help offset some of the costs associated with that, some of the businesses reached out to us and were willing to provide some financial support, of which one of those has been Mr. Casey Geiten with Sosby Funeral Home. They made donations for National Night Out. But here recently, one of our motorcycle officers was preparing to conduct a funeral escort down to Sosby Funeral Home, and Mr. Geiten saw that the officer was wearing what we refer to as an external vest carrier. It allows the officers to wear their vests outside of their shirts, but the vest itself looks like a shirt itself. If you look at the three officers here, they're actually wearing external vest carriers. And there's a lot of advantages to that. I want to point out that they don't look like a typical SWAT flak jacket with all the magazines and extra things that officers tend to carry when they're especially assigned. It looks like a regular uniform shirt. And if an officer's out here and he takes some reports and he wants to come back to the station, or he's been out direct in traffic for an extended period of time, he comes back to the station and he wants to cool down, he has the opportunity to take this vest carrier off. And there's a breathable shirt that actually we purchased separate from the vest carriers that goes with the uniform. And it's really a unique feature, and I'm not aware of anybody that's really doing that here locally as far as department-wide. But after seeing him, Mr. Geiten approached us about the possibility of Sosby Funeral Home purchasing these for all of our officers. I went down and met with him. He was really, this is something that he wanted to do personally, and he purchased the vest carrier for every officer on the agency. And that accounts to about $2,600 that he donated to this police department. And again, it's not just Sosby's, but it's a lot of the business communities reaching out. It's been very well appreciated. It helps offset some of the costs associated with buying equipment. And as you can see, the shirts, vest carriers blend right in with the shirts, so it doesn't look like it's any way intimidating to anybody out there in the public. And I sincerely appreciate Casey doing that. And we'd like to reach out with him and present him with a community-oriented policeman partnership award. And it says, "To Mr. Casey Geiten, Sosby Funeral Home, for purchasing and outfitting all sworn personnel with external vest carriers. Your generosity and support of the Canton Police Department and our employees is greatly appreciated this 16th day of October 2014." Casey, thank you very much. Appreciate it. We're not going to interrupt the meeting, but we'd like to get some pictures and we'll do a press release on this to get some special appreciation to him and the community. And I know we have some of the media here, and I'll go pick up on the story too. Right, Mayor Hoggood, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation we have. We have a young gentleman here, Wade Whitfield, who'll be receiving this proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. And I think we've done this in the past few years anyway, so if you would come forward.
I will read this, and then we will present this to Mr. Whitfield. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those in traffic in them, and whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, couples with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the young marine of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas government and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the Red Ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Camarena, a drug enforcement administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas October 23rd through the 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, I, Gene Hoggood, Mayor of the City of Canton, do hereby proclaim October the 23rd to 31st as Red Ribbon Week in Canton, and urge all citizens to join me in this special observance.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Captain. Okay. In your agenda package, are the minutes from October the 2nd council meeting? I'm sorry, did I miss one? We already passed that.
Sorry.
Thank you, didn't want me to know. I missed two or three last time. The October 2nd minutes and the October 2nd public hearing minutes, are there any changes or corrections to be made to those? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion.
We have a second. Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those no, all members voted for the motion.
Just for the record, you not even voted, I wasn't here.
Okay. All members with exception to Mr. Burris. We've got a core of them, okay. Okay, our 10-minute public input period, we have two people sign up, Jim Bucy. He would come forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen. Driving into this council meeting this evening, I was stopped by law enforcement by an exceeded posted speed limit. I asked, "Where is the speed posted?" I was advised that the new limits have been approved, but not yet posted. I was also advised that I could be given a summons, but that would be up to someone else to decide. Yes, what I described is an analogy. Unfortunately, that is how I learned of the new campaign sign ordinance as discussed at last council meeting. I want to make two points. Based on definitive information that appeared in the Cherokee Tribune on October 9th, and in good faith, I have removed some of my signs that may violate this new ordinance. Secondly, I am responsible for the location of my campaign signs. If they are in the wrong location, it's my fault, and I take full responsibility. Let me caveat that last statement. I ask the council to think about the possibility that once the new signed ordinance takes effect, someone could reposition a campaign sign and place it in a location that violates the ordinance. The reason for doing that could be accidental, mischief, or for some political reason. I ask the council to provide a remedy in case that situation occurs. Thank you for the time to hear my views.
Thank you. Pat Bell?
Good evening, council members and those of you present this evening. On behalf of the Canton Main Street Program, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce you to a valuable new member of the Main Street team. This is Daniel Hendrickson. Daniel has been in training with us for just a little over a month now, and has quickly become a valuable asset to Megan Griffin, our overworked and so dedicated Main Street Director, and to the entire board. Daniel came to us as someone who wanted to volunteer, as he had with the Funk Heritage Center. Coincidentally, we were looking for someone to fill a Main Street budgeted, part-time intern position, so Daniel's interest became a win-win for all of us. Daniel is exceptionally bright and dedicated to his job. In fact, I would go so far as to say about Daniel's brightness, his accomplishments would make many of us, even those of you sitting on the dais, feel like underachievers if you just read his resume. He has already contributed to the Main Street Program with many creative ideas. I am certain that many of you have already met Daniel and have spoken with him at City Hall or while he's been around downtown. But if not, please do make a point to stop by the Main Street office, visit with Megan, tell her what a wonderful job she's doing, and introduce yourself to Daniel. Daniel, unfortunately, will be headed off to college next year, but we are very fortunate to benefit from his talents while he is with us this year. I just wanted to introduce you to Daniel, welcome him to the Main Street Program and to the city.
Okay, the, under the consent agenda, that's what we have on the public input, but under consent agenda, I would, I will read these. If there's any that need to be pulled off, then we will do so in addition to the Cherokee Arts Council out of item number D. Item A, Approval of Classification Compensation Study Memorandum of Agreement with Conri and Associates. Item B, Approval of Scheme of System Change Order for Reduction of $86,000 in Cost. Item C, Approval of a 10-inch and larger tap fee at $42,350. I would like to pull that one off and discuss it further. Item D, Approval of Funding Agreements with Canton Tourism, Tree Commission Downtown Development Authority, Square of Regional Library, and Chamber of Commerce and Historical Society. And then we will vote on the Cherokee Arts Council separately. Item D, Approval of Change Order of $15,000 for Emergency Replacement of Pipe Valves and Valves on Marietta Road. And item F, Approval of Annual Update of Capable Improvements Element and Five-Year Short-Term Work Plan for the Impact Fee Program. Are there any others that need to be pulled off? Like I said, I won't pull off the 10-inch and larger tap fee at this time for further discussion.
I'm going to approve all of them.
Okay. Have a motion and second. Any other discussion? No, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, the reason, I wanted to have some concern about the approval of a 10-inch tap fee at this point. And the concept here is a tap fee at $42,350, which is the same as an 8-inch. Now, it's, the purpose of tap fees, as I've understood them always, has been really to assure that we have the infrastructure and the plant in place in order to have the amount of water that a particular entity needs when it needs it. In other words, we have to have, if we have someone that needs a million gallons of water a day, we've got to have a million gallons, you know, plant that is almost dedicated to them, basically. It's got to be there when they need it. The purpose of the monthly fees and sewer fees and water charges and stuff like that basically covers, it should cover, in my opinion, the operational cost and general maintenance to the system, but not necessarily to the plant. The tap fees basically are dedicated, or should be dedicated, to the plant. Now, 8-inch we have at $42,350, and we did not have a 10-inch water line, okay? An 8-inch water line, according to the information I can get with some very general guidelines, if you were to assume a very low gravity, low pressure at six feet per flow of velocity, would do about 57,000 gallons per hour, okay? Which would mean about a million, three gallons a day. So you can imagine if it were opened up completely, it would be quite a bit of, quite a bit of water coming out of that. I guess my point here is, is that a 10-inch would do almost pushing twice what an 8-inch will do, okay? A lot of times you don't think about it, but you know, a 4-inch pipe will do a lot more than twice of a 2-inch pipe. It'll carry a lot more water than a 2-inch. So it seems to me that we need to rethink this $42,350, keeping it the same as a 10-inch as an 8-inch. I talked with the Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority, and what I've learned from them basically is that for an 8-inch water tap, their latest charges are like $204,000. But what that includes now, they purchase, or out of that is purchase the meter, the meter box, the backflow preventer, and I guess whatever it's in, and that sort of thing. They don't even install it, from what I understand. But out of that $204,000, according to Rick Dobbs of the Cherokee Water and Sewer Authority, the cost of that equipment is about $34,000, $35,000, which means that if you subtract $35,000 from $204,000, you've got about what amounts to a tap fee of $169,000 for an 8-inch. So, and this is, this is directly, or should be directly related to what they have to have in a plant, what it costs to build a plant new in order to provide that amount of water for the demand that exists. So what I would like to suggest, if it's not an absolute emergency at this time, and that is not, is that we look at this and rethink these one more time, and that we really get a real good comparison between what we're doing and what the county's doing on that. The Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority has done a pretty good job for quite a long time with their tap fees and their plants, and always had a lot of money to seem like to spare there more than we have. But I don't want the city to be short-changed on this tap fee. And I'm afraid unless we really take a second, a much closer look at it, that that might be what happens. But that's just my opinion. Mr. Marner?
Yes. Of course, we know the volume going through these two different pipes has a significant number of variables that could impact how much water is really taken out. I looked at it slightly in a simpler approach, because we don't have a 10-inch tap fee. I looked at it slightly in a simpler approach, because we don't have a 10-inch tap fee, and without getting into how high up the water pressure, the resistance that the pipe itself creates, and all of these other issues, and the user that might be doing it, I took a simple solution for arriving at an interim possible price for a 10-inch tap fee until, until we do a complete review of all of our tap fees, and I used the simple calculation of the area of a circle, and took the percentage difference between a 10-inch pipe, assuming that they were both flowing at the same rate, and an 8-inch pipe, and it's approximately 50% more area on a 10-inch pipe than on an 8-inch. And if we were to use that as a basis for establishing a temporary fee, that fee would be approximately $66,800. I think it's gonna take us longer than the short period of time to when we get the first request to develop or to review and develop a better rate structure, and I would suggest if council chooses to do that, we establish a 10-inch rate based on just that simple difference of the area or the flow through.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The question I would have is, the $42,000 is a huge difference between the 200 that you mentioned, and then, do we see that same large gap in the other sized pipes, the eights, the fours? Is it that much difference in what we charge versus what they charge? I understand they get, they, the county gives them more than what apparently we do as far as equipment, not?
We, the 204, out of that, they have specifications that they require, and what I understood from Rick Dobbs was that they actually order that equipment out of that $204,000.
And that was what, about $100?
But the developer, then whoever's doing this actually does the tap and, and, you know, installs this stuff.
Well, it just sounds to me, and I might have just missed, missed it in the conversation, is that all our tap fees, water tap fees, are grossly underpriced?
Yeah, the, the only thing wrong with what Mr. Cummins says, I think, and it seems to me, is that his, the assumption, and, and what he's done is they can, you know, the, the area of the 10-inch and the area of the 8-inch, and looked at a percentage difference there, but the only problem with that is it assumes that that tap fee for an 8-inch is good. Right. And it, and it may, it may weigh, it may be well low, I don't
Well, compared, compared to the county, it's way low.
Way low.
It doesn't make a difference whether it's in the city or in the county, it costs the same, it's, to get the equipment.
I, I still would like to see us, even if, since they're, they're not knocking on the door at this time, that, that we start to review those. If something comes up and, and the, that they have to have an answer in the next, whatever day or two from a particular time, we, I think we could call a special meeting and do exactly what he said and do that. But I'd like to see us hold off, not, not give them that price at this point, or anybody, I don't know, not just them, anybody, whoever.
Should we not check maybe one or two other places, just to see who's that like Woodstock or whatever?
Well, I don't think county, do they have a 10-inch? No, they don't have
They didn't county does have
That, that 204 is an 8-inch fee.
Wow.
You see.
How many people do we have on 10 inches?
With, I'm assuming we don't have any people, I don't know.
We don't, we don't have any on 10.
What are we trying to do, play something?
The normal
We anticipate there's gonna be a request by Danny.
What would your need 10 inches for?
Well
Be a awful big operation?
It's a big operation.
Hospital, does a hospital have need 10 inches?
The issue, the issue is, if I may answer, the issue is the hospital. And it's not the hospital itself, it's that they're gonna be, as time goes on, expanding medical office buildings and other facilities that would run off of this line. So what they are doing is in anticipation of down-the-road development, having sufficient water flow to all of their facilities. The initial, if you look at a hospital, for example, there's a way to compute at table, I mean, it's just a rough use in a hospital, and this does not include irrigation, or any kind of refrigeration systems, or any kind of cooling systems, but actual usage within the hospital consumed water is 350 gallons per bed per day.
Per bed?
Per bed, per day is what they estimate, or is, you know, is a, is an average on a chart. The reason that they want a 10-inch is that they're gonna be tapping into that 10-inch line in the future. Now, that would give us time to completely, and I, you don't have to say it, as the mayor said, we could do a special call meeting and set that fee. But they're trying to zero in on what their costs are gonna be. We could say, your first 10-inch tap, or your 10-inch tap right now is this, but it's going to be changed, and review all of our tap fees prior to the construction of these additional units in that area, and it could be a changeable fee, or change in the later date. At, at some point in time, we're gonna have to give them a price for that tap.
We don't have to do that today.
No, but it's getting very close, because they're bringing in the plans, I think you're looking at a January start actually in the ground.
Are we gonna make money on every gallon of water that flows through that 10-inch?
But again, as
Are we gonna make money on the, on the water?
Well, we're gonna get our standard rates for the water, but again, that's not for the expansion or the availability, as the mayor says, the capacity of the plant.
Do we make money? I mean, we, we have a net charge to the hospital over what, what it costs for the water?
Well, in, in, in practice, what you try to do in your water and searing bill, billing is cover the cost of your operations, not be a profit center, is what you're saying. So we don't try to make money, we try to cover the costs of those, of all the operations.
Oh, I'm thinking about Gillette's made billions giving away the razors and charging them $4 a blade, so, you know, maybe we should lower the tap fee, get them to use a lot of water, and should make it time forever. Because you only charge the tap fee once, right? We only charge the tap fee once. I, I, I think we should, I agree with you, Gene, but I think we need to do a little more study on this, if we have the time. Gene, we have the time or not?
Well, we're gonna have to give an answer to Northside, wouldn't
We must, do we have 30 days? Do we have 30 days?
Probably not on the first one.
Are they gonna
Well, I'm gonna have one 10-inch tap, right?
Are you suggesting that we go to
Once that, once we've paid for a 10-inch tap, I mean, we're not gonna be able to go back and
No, but let's, let's look at it a different way. If we charge, let's say we could charge $200,000 to the, to the Northside for that one tap, that one first tap. You set a precedent, the next guy that comes along, wants a, WallStar comes along, wants to build a hospital up here or something, I don't think they can, but the bottom line is, you gotta charge them too, and maybe that's not right, that's not the right number. Maybe that's not the right number. Do we know that, are we comfortable with that's the right number?
No.
Then we shouldn't do that.
No, I would
We shouldn't, well, then we shouldn't approve this, because if you're not comfortable in it.
We're not
We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna approve this then, right?
Well, that's what Gene was saying.
Well, I think, I think we ought to immediately begin to take a look at, at other jurisdictions, including the Water and Sewer Authority, obviously, and because, because they do surround our systems, you know? So, I mean
Glenn, if we can, they're gonna run a 10-inch line, and we can always say to them, I'm sorry, we can't give you a price for that tap.
Today?
Today.
Right, but, but, you know, if we had to have an emergency, whatever, we could, we could, if they got into that, we could do that, but I think you wanna be comfortable with the number, because you're gonna have to live with it for a long time.
I, I agree with what, what you said, John, is that, you know, this is not really about the hospital, it's about the tap fee for 10-inch line. And whoever comes in is what it's gonna, it's gotta be uniform, that'll be the same.
But we gotta look at, if, if, if we have this type of gap in a 10-inch pipe, we'd probably have the same gap in the other sizes of pipes.
I can tell you the church.
It's not right, we need to, we need to come up with a 10-inch just to satisfy Northside, but we need to look at all of them. Right, we go.
Glenn, how did that one problem occur on Route 20, that one business that we didn't have?
That was an 8-inch, so
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, if you compare it 8-inch for that one business, compared to Northside for a 10-inch, there's some disparity there that doesn't make sense.
They had, most of that was fire.
It would, it would essentially be the same fee, think about that.
See, if I might, Mr. Mayor, there's the complexity of the size of the line, it goes into two, it goes into two different types of use. There's the, what I call the continuous use, or on-demand use, which is like a hospital, it turns the faucet on, the water runs out. There is sizes of lines that are committed to what I call event usage. And event usage is, for example, a fire suppression system, sprinkler system. That requires in certain cases, an 8-inch line to disperse in a very short period of time, an event, a massive amount of water to suppress the fire. Now, you could have 10 or 20 of those 8-inch fire suppression lines within the city, but you're not gonna have eight or 10 continuous events using it, making those demands on the plant capacity. So that, all of these things, as the mayor suggested, we've really gotta relook at how we price. Because the incident you're talking about required an 8-inch line for a fire suppression system in a building that had only two bathrooms, on a continuous use. So the event requirement was for an 8-inch line, for which we were going to charge $42,000 or whatever it is, $350 for event usage, and that's compared to somebody that's gonna have a continual or on an on-demand usage.
How would the Northside Hospital have an event that could be suppressed by a 10-inch line? If that particular business, you know, I'm serious, you get down to the nitty-gritty here, is that the bottom line, if that guy had to have an 8-inch for that fire event suppression, if there was a fire at that Northside Hospital, how much do they need? They can't do it with one 10-inch line.
Well, they can, and here's the reason why, because of the assumption you're making in a huge building, is that you got the fire going throughout the whole building at the same time. Usually, that suppression system kicks in where the fire starts, so you've got all the event going to that one location within the building. You're not, you're not running your, your, in that event, you're not running every sprinkler in a, in a five or a six-story building if the fire's on the third floor in room 206. It's gonna set off that sprinkler system in 206, not throughout the entire hospital.
Well, in any case, if, as long as we're not holding up Northside, if that's the one company or entity that could be affected, I think we should put this on the work session for next week.
Yes, ma'am.
It's my opinion that we don't have enough data to make this decision tonight. I'd like our city manager to collect some data from two or three counties and two or three cities that are comparable to ours, bring that data back to our next work session, let us ponder it then with possible action that evening.
We're gonna make it, have a vote on the work session for that, possibly?
Well, we could, I mean, certainly could at that point, under, if, if there's pressure to, you know, move on.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, well, let's just do that then.
We'll do that, we'll put together a comparison of other areas. It will be somewhat complex because of its, it's like comparing, it's somewhat will be a comparison of a stripped-down vehicle, and when we start looking at an 8-inch line, there's a stripped-down vehicle in one locale, because it doesn't include all these extra things, to an 8-inch fully-loaded vehicle in another locale. So it's, it's gonna be a little hard to generate apples to apples here, but we will put something together for you.
See, Northside's already gonna ask for two more stories on that building, if I want their original though.
Well, my response to them is gonna be that if they need a 10-inch line, they need a 10-inch line, and we can't establish the tap fee at this particular time, because council needs, we need to review it and make a decision, or you need to make a decision on what review we come up with.
Okay. All right, let's move along. Now, we have the approval of a funding agreement for the Cherokee County Arts Council. Do we have a motion to present?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Those no, all members vote with the motion with exception, Mr. Goodman, stay. Okay. Okay, under old business, we have second reading in action on the ordinance to amend Canton Code Section 18-51D to increase professional occupational tax from $200 to $300. This is what we just had the public hearing on, is, you know, I have a discussion on this.
Well, I was gonna, I respectfully request a motion to amend the Canton Code Section 18-51B to increase the professional occupation tax from $200 to $300.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So, someone
Second.
Okay, now, any discussion? Mr. Goodman?
Well, I just wanted to bring this up once again, Glenn, to my best of my regulations, we actually increased this fee $100 last year from 100 to 200, I think. And I'm pretty sure it was last year, and now we're increasing it another $100. It just seems that, I, I just think that another tax that I just hate to keep passing through taxes. I think it might deter some of the businesses from moving down here rather than encouraging taxes. What's to say we're not gonna go up another $100, another $100 if it just continues?
We can't, we can't
Can't go 400, 400's the state max, you could go up, yeah, you could go up another 100, I believe, in Washington.
But, you know, I, I know we're trying to encourage businesses to come in, and it seems like we're, if we just, we went up two years in a row, it's not encouraging.
I know we can't bind future councils, but we won't do this again next year. That's all I can say, I won't anyway.
Any other discussion or comments? Okay, we have a motion, second. All those in favor, signify the same eye?
Aye.
Those no? All members vote for the motion with exception, Mr. Goodman, voting no. Okay, discussion and possible action to reduce waste removal fees. We had talked about this at a meeting briefly, I think, one or two meetings ago, in that when we, when we talked about and decided to continue with waste management as our garbage collection service, and that it appears that, based on the bids that we had, that we could reduce without affecting very much our current budget, the waste fees for those who are out paying, I believe, $16.50, which is every one, every residence, with the exception of seniors who are paying less. But, the actual senior rate charged to the city actually went down, so the, the city would be making a little bit more on the seniors than they were, but, you know, they'd still be, they'd also be making a little bit more on the $16.50 if you left it the same. So, you know, I feel like that, you know, where we can, in a fund like sanitation or water or whatever, we need to try to take some of this burden off of the taxpayers and the property, and the fee payers in that situation. But, you know, I think that's over for discussion, Mr. Russ.
We will have a automatic reduction based on the fact that we will no longer be collecting for the recycle bank, so that'll be about 60 to 70 cents per residential collection. I would like to, to see this possibility. I think both Ms. McGrew and Mr. Hockman have talked a lot about blight and trying to remove blight from the city of Canton. I would like to see the $2, full $2 reduction in October of 2020. I would like to see the two-dollar, full two-dollar reduction in October of two thousand and fifteen, and during the next year, the extra dollar thirty that we would have given in a two-dollar reduction, be set aside funds for removing the blight, so we will never come to this council without funds to remove blight from the city of Canton. And in October of two thousand and fifteen, we give a full reduction to everybody, and we'll have the money, the city will look better because of that one year of collecting that extra dollar thirty per resident.
Stop.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion at this time. The sixteen fifty, I do agree that we need to take the two dollars that are there, that can be available, to use to help clean up our city, and that is, as just Mr. Russ said, the area of blight. But, so I'd like to make a motion that we take the two dollars, put it into a separate escrow account, with those funds to be used to help fund the cleanup of our city. So, the motion is going to be a two-part motion, Mr. Mayor. And the one is the two dollars to go into an escrow account for cleanup, and part B would be that we request that the city manager, the city attorney, and possibly our police department, who's head of code enforcement, to review all the ordinances and to modify where required to enforce and remedy the blighted areas with the funds that we have in escrow. That's the motion. Now, I'd like to go and just do a little, tell you why I want the motion to go through. One is going to...
Can we, can we review the motion in a second?
Yeah, we have a second. Need a second.
Yeah, second. Exactly, can I just clarify one thing, Hooky? You said two dollars. That means that the seventy cents is still going to be reduced, and we're not, we're going to take a full two dollars for this fund?
We're going to take a full two dollars.
Thank you. I second that motion.
I have been, this past couple of weeks, I've, you know, I've been talking about a list of rentals, trying to register them, I've been talking about business license, trying to control. What I've been trying to do is find the strategies and tactics in order to get a better control on the subpar housing that surrounds our city, or in particular, our downtown area. I've been receiving more phone calls than I've ever received, more emails. I have just other cities reading in the paper, in particular, the city of Decatur, and some of the efforts that they're doing. You know, they got thirty-three code enforcement officers.
Code?
Yeah, can you imagine? Thirty-three. We got about half right now. So, after several meetings with city officials, I've met with the county officials, but...
Well, Randy Johnson is pretty sure, and just when you said a half, I thought that was a pretty low blow.
No, Officer Johnson spends a lot of time doing other things. He's here on court days. He does animal control for the city, and I imagine he has a few other responsibilities. So, he's not a full-time code enforcement officer. I'm sorry, that wasn't meant to be that way. I guess you, it's his own, his own name for himself. But the first step, the first step was taking, I've been going on for a couple of years, and that was to establish a new UDC code for the city. And incorporate inside of that UDC code is the International Property Maintenance Code, and this is the code that's going to give our, the code enforcement officers, the opportunity to go out and do the jobs that they so much wanted to do, but because of lack of maybe some of the wording of the code, and, and then trying to remedy some of the issues through the courts, has not been efficient. So, that's the reason I'm asking that the city manager, the city attorney, our police chief, to get together and work through the ordinances, to modify those ordinances, to come up with the remedies to take care of this issue. The second thing we've done, we said, the police chief yesterday posted the position for the second code officer, which is something that's needed, we probably need more than that, considering how much blight we do have at the moment. The third issue is that we're going to have the need for some funds. When you have some of these houses, and by the way, I've got multiple pictures here, if anybody would like to see them, some of the housing that is in it, there's not even a living person in some of these houses, that are on the entrances to our city, that we want to spend money on to make it look nice and to attract people, but the first thing they see are these, and they're horrible, absolutely disgraceful, that our city has allowed this to go on. And it's only up to this council, Mr. Mayor, and you, and our citizens, to get this changed. So, how do we fund it? We take the two dollars and put it in the escrow account. So, you have those funds, you've got a house that we've gone through the process, it's time to tear it down. It costs money to tear it down. These funds will pay for that. Then we put a lien on the property. If someday it sells, then we'll get our money back. But we've got to clean up our city. We've got to put some more beauty back into our city. We've got beautiful countryside. So, that's what's going on. The benefits, I think they're pretty obvious. We talk about economic development and helping our downtown area. You've heard me talk about the blighted areas, and I'm all ready to rent a bus, put the council on there with the press, and drive around probably within two-mile radius of our city and show you the blight, things that we drive by on a daily basis, that we don't drive down that little street. We don't drive down those streets. I went to one that's right off this city's North Street, right off North Street, was a meth house, and there were people living in it. And that's a shame. That's against the law, too. It's against the law, and we could own it by not enforcing the codes. We've got the code now. We've got it. So, economic development downtown, this is the better way to spend money, and it's not as much. It'll increase the value, the value of all the properties. When you increase the value, what happens?
Pay more taxes.
We could, thank you, we could pay a little more taxes. So, it also, which is a bigger issue, is it protects our citizens that live in these dumpy places. We need to protect them. That's our duty as council people, Mr. Mayor, city manager. It is our duty to protect these people from rat-infested places where people rent, and we have too many people living in there. So, we need to do this, but stop the continual decline. If we remain right here at this level and take no steps forward, next year we'll be at this level, and this level, and this level. It's not going to go up unless we put some teeth into our enforcement. We put in the budget for the, for the code enforcement officer. We've got the code to do what we need to do. City attorney is supportive of this. He used to be a judge in this type of court, so he knows what needs to be done. So, I think, well, the best way to spend that two dollars is to help clean up our city.
One point of confusion, and I passed out tonight an analysis of the impact of the two-dollar reduction. The problem I have with the motion is two dollars and seventy cents is being thrown around, two dollars here and seventy cents there. The motion was just two dollars.
Two dollars.
But what was the other seven?
It's going to be automatically reduced, because we're no longer going to collect for the recycle bank.
Okay. So, the fee will be set at fourteen fifty?
That, that's, the two dollars, the residents will never see that two dollars, except in removal of blight.
Okay. So, the fee remains the same, and the two dollars, according to this motion, will go to, if it's passed, will go to the blight removal?
Seventy cents, or seventy, seventy cents is going to be reduced because of the recycle.
There is an analysis sheet.
How much would that be, Mr. Goodman?
Hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
Two dollars each?
Two dollars each.
I thought we had about eight thousand?
We have six, yeah, but you're counting seniors, and we're not doing any on the senior end of it, because the senior rate is already reduced.
Oh, so we're not going to, we're not going to save the two dollars from the seniors?
No, no, it's just a sixteen fifty fee.
It's approximately six thousand two hundred and fifty residential customers, which will...
Two dollars?
Which...
Not commercial?
No, there's nothing, this is...
What, not associated commercial buildings?
Well, not even if they're blighted, too, if you take the two dollars.
Look at Canton Housing Authority building up there. I mean, if we can't clean that one up...
Oh, you clean, no, 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 I meant the rates, the rate reduction only affects the residential customers.
Right. That was the only ones involved in the recycle bank. Only those involved in the recycle bank will see a reduction.
Well, they won't, they won't see any reduction if you use that two dollar.
They'll see seventy cents.
Yeah, that's about the motion, of seventy cents.
No, no. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Let me, let me have my soapbox here, just, just a minute, and, you know, I don't think anyone, I don't think anyone here disagrees that we want to clean up blight, but I do have, I do have a problem with cleaning up on the back of the water customers. I mean, if we want to add another, another enforcement officer or two more, let's amend our agenda some more, our budget, and do it.
You mean, the water customers, you didn't mean that?
Trash, trash.
The trash.
I'm sorry.
It's on the same bill, but it's...
It's on the same bill. But, yeah, they're paying the same bill, so it's going up, you know?
No, it's not going up.
It's the same price.
Well, it's going, it's essentially an increase if we don't need that two dollars, and we keep, we need the two dollars.
We need the two dollars, it's essentially an increase. We need the two dollars, and it is trash.
That's good.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't expect to get too far with this, to be honest with you, on the circumstances, but I think that, you know, if we, if we can, where we can lower fees, we need to lower those fees. If we have to do this so that everybody pays, everybody ought to be paying for that, not just, not just the homeowners, everybody ought to be paying for that, cleaning up blight.
We're only taking money away from what the city would make. It's money that the city would have for the general fund, we're making sure it doesn't end up in the general fund, it's going to clean up the place.
Well, one way to not make sure it doesn't go in the general fund is don't charge it again with it. Then it won't go in there.
We're going to do that in October of fifteen.
Well, I just think, I just think, you know, we...
No, we're not. That wasn't what I, that was not even my move.
But anyway, you know, I've said in my piece, I think, I just don't think... Sandy, you have a question?
No, I don't have a question. I wanted to tell you that while we have to clean up the blight, I'm not sure where the money should come from. To me, this smells a little bit like stormwater. We've got the money, let's use it here. There's no clear-cut menu of who would receive this money, how this money would be spent. I'm uncomfortable collecting money without a list, a firm list of how this will be used and who will receive it, and exactly how the money would be dispersed. If a company was engaged to do work, how would they be paid? I think we need to make those decisions first and come back to this. While blight is number one on my list, I think this deserves more conversation and a few more concrete ideas put behind it, and ways to spend the money, and not just say, let's collect this money and spend it.
I don't think that, have any idea that's what we were trying to do, Mr. Goodman?
And we can supply your list real easy.
No, I do not.
I have an order here, let's go over to Mr. Goodman here, he had his hand up. Go ahead.
I guess I have a little different perspective than some of you have. I certainly agree that we need to clean up the city. I mean, you know, it's, it's a beautiful town, we've got a few bad spots, but, you know, when you look at other cities, which have businesses in many more cities around here, around the cities, about five are, and compared to those, Canton's way ahead. But, you know, I, for one, I'm for less government instead of more. And what I see happening here is starting to, you know, you start with enough, you've got one code officer, next thing you know, you've got two, and next thing you know, you're heading toward thirty. I think, I think that's going the wrong way. I think there's another way to actually do this, rather than trying to force people to do this. I think that, you know, that we, if we propose doing this and get our public behind it, that we can get people enthused about cleaning up their houses, and the part that you have of you that, that, you know, I know you have a real passion for this, and so do all of us, really, but the, you know, not knowing who owns a lot. They have a registered agent, all you've got to do is send out a registered, a certified letter, and you can find out who owns that house. I mean, it's not hard to do. You can find out if it's a city or county-owned person, find out that lot, and you can get an actual person, so they have, an actual person has to pay that tax, but you can pay it out of a corporation, too, or you can pay it cash, and nobody would ever know. You can send it to a registered agent and find out who's, who's responsible for that. So, I, you know, I just don't want to see us starting something that's just going to grow, 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 more and more government, where we're, you know, people who live, live here want to be a part of this community, and I think they'll, you know, they want to do what's right, and they want this house to be looking, you know, their house to be looking nice.
Mr. Cap?
Yeah. I think the issue is not so much those that live here or live near here, but let's take a property that's owned by a pension fund that happens to be on La Salle Street in Chicago, and we do code enforcement, and the first thing we have to determine is whether we can serve them by certified letter. I don't even know whether that's one of the things that we have to look into in terms of ordinances and stuff. But we serve them, and they throw it away. We find them, they throw it away. We tell them the code, come to court, they throw it away. The purpose that this fund could be used for is, at some point in time, you have monies to say, we're going to tear your building down, condemn the property, and put liens against it, and if the lien, go through the lien process, and go even through the foreclosure and sale of the process of the property with somebody who will ignore every written notice that they get. I think that's more what Bobby, or Mr. Dyer, had told me was the problem. Is that a correct statement?
Pretty much. I don't know how many of those you would actually have. I think we don't, I think, like Ms. McGrew, I'm not sure we've got enough information to know how many are there like that. Maybe it may not be four or five in the city, and yet, most of them may be individually owned, you know? I don't know of the places. But, and it's very easy, quite honestly, to find out who owns it, you know? You can get on the computer right now and go to the tax assessor's website, and you can find the name of the owner there, and address, where they send their tax bill to, and you can find out who owns it. But, you know, I do, I do agree with it, we have some work to do, but I, I think, I think it's important that, you know, I just don't see using garbage fees for that when we have an opportunity for that particular fund to reduce it to our residents, and to leave it up there and then use that money for something else.
When I was in Savannah, I met an attorney that, he was a city attorney, he was on staff full-time for a community, I can't remember the name of which one it was, but I could, I know I have it at home, about sixty thousand residents, and he said, on their website was the process for condemnation and clearing the property, and he said it takes about ninety days, it's very simple. It's very simple.
That couldn't have happened long ago.
Yeah, but I think we, if we were to go through that process and then came back and said, we don't have the money to bulldoze the house, what do we do then? And what Hooky's just suggesting is we'd have the money there, then, of course, we'd go through all the procedures, and at least at the final step, you're not looking for the money to do that. Let me just add something. I spent an hour today with Matthew, Thomas, and Megan Griffin, and a guy that I've actually been working on for ten years to open a business in Canton, is going to come down here next month, and we went over, he asked for specific information, and on the base of that specific information... and on the basis of that specific information, we're just trying to put together a package to answer all his questions and attract him to our city, now, I'm challenged to figure out what route for him to come into our city, to find the best route that will avoid all this blight, I sure wish there was only one, because then I would say, come in this route only, whether that be sixteen, nineteen, fourteen, whatever that is, of five seventy-five to come to our city, and that's, we're gonna put together a great package, but I still have to, he's coming down here to visit and check our city out, and that's unfortunate that I'm, I'm left with that dilemma, one of the things also, I don't know, Hooky, if some of those properties might be county properties, and at our meeting that we were invited to by the county in January up in, in, remember that one? Buzz Aaron's committed to, to helping us with the blighted properties that are on the entrance to Canton, Georgia, but they're county properties, and I can point to three or four of them, when you come in on exit fourteen, we can't do anything about them, it's county, so we have to look for a partnership with the county to try to help us with the same thing.
Okay, Mr. Huffman?
Try to answer some of these questions, I've had meetings with Buzz Aaron and Jared Cooper on those properties, on some of the properties, right here, I've already had one property cited that's in the county on hospital, seven hundred Hospital Road, that's a county property, so, um, I have already taken action on that, first thing Buzz Aaron said to me, you're gonna have to have some funds if you want to get this done, and Jack, I don't, I can't agree with you, I, I just, I don't, I don't see as much blight in comparison as our city's got, if you just take the time to drive around a little bit and get on some of these roads and go down in those areas, we drive on the main roads and don't go in those areas, it's there, it's there in loads of it, and if we turn our backs on it, like has been before, because this city and talking to some of the employees that are involved in this, the reason it hadn't gone, gone forty is because we don't put any teeth in it, and I'm trying to put teeth, and you've gotta have some funds, this is a way, it is trash, you're talking about twenty-four dollars a year, and Mr. Mayor, I think if you go out on the street and ask them, where would you rather spend that twenty-four dollars, that the same twenty-four dollars you spent last year, would you clean up this blight? I'll bet you'll get ninety percent saying, clean it up.
Anyone else, Ms. McGrew?
Ball light, again, still is number one on my issue, we've got to clean up our city to attract people to live here and attract new businesses and to keep our businesses that are here, I would feel more comfortable supporting the funds that we're collecting taxes, fines, fees from our citizens, and I'd be more inclined to support that, Mr. Huffman, if, um, we had a clearly defined use scale, uh, the money would be used specifically for this, that, and the other, rather than, I, I, I just feel more comfortable.
I understand that, Ms. McGrew, and we can easily do that, I'm just making a motion to get the ball rolling, not to get into the, too much into the weeds, I mean, to make the motion, I'm not gonna give you a scale right now, I don't have it, but I, it's, mentally, I could probably sit down there and write one out real easy, but that's the reason I've asked the city manager, in, in the motion, I had the city manager, city attorney, police department, to get in there and decide what needs to be done to remedy, and in that is where it will tell us how and where to spend the money, it's, that is not a problem, we're not gonna be foolish about spending the money, this man will never do that.
You know, uh, when, when a person gets their water bill, and they look at the, or what they look at is that bottom number, and, uh, if you reduce that by two dollars, they'll see that, if you don't reduce it, and you can reduce it, it's essentially an increase to them, if they know you didn't need that two dollars, after you just did a four and a half percent increase on their water bill, uh, on their water usage and sewer usage on October first, just a couple of weeks ago.
I can't believe you oppose that, Mr. Mayor.
Oppose what?
Oppose taking this two dollars.
I, I would do oppose taking the two dollars, I don't oppose.
This twenty-four dollars a year, I just can't believe that anybody in this council would oppose that, you'd have to recuse yourself, Mr. Goodwin, in the vote.
I don't think so.
That doesn't have your name on those properties up there? Your family name, your family name?
Are, are you saying those are blighted properties?
If.
Are you saying they're blighted properties?
They could get close.
I think we got a, a question too about how you define blight, now, if it is definitely a health hazard or a, uh, fire hazard or safety or something like that, then it ought to be addressed, and we have the authority to address that right now without doing anything else, without raising the fees or, or anything else, we can do that, we haven't done the first one that I know of, and how much money do you have to have to do one, and once you make an example of one, I think you're gonna begin to see others fall in line, that you're not gonna need to do it, anyway, that, that's just my opinion. We have a motion in a second, Mr. Drew.
Just one comment, if this motion fails, and there's a new motion to reduce the rate by two dollars, which will really work out to two sixty or two seventy off the bill, we won't be able to go back, in other words, that's, pot is empty for that two dollars, you can't, you can't go back and take it again, meaning the subject for that, two dollars is gone, because we're giving it back, they're telling, we, we can't come here next month and say, we need the money for, for blighted properties, because that opportunity is going to pass when we return the two dollars.
That's a question for our partner, Derek.
No, it's not a question at all, no.
You say you can't go back and do it?
What, what are you gonna go back and raise the price? No, you're gonna reduce the price here, this motion, this motion is only, this, this motion has to fail first for us to come forward and, and then reintroduce another motion to give two dollars off to everybody, if that passes, then the case closed with regard to that two dollars for use of blighted property remedy.
I, I don't.
Just stating the fact.
I think from a political standpoint, the case is closed, but from a actual standpoint, whether you can do it or not, I'm sure you can do it.
Well, well, we can do it, I mean, there's no question, but you, you don't have an opportunity anymore because you're giving it back, but go ahead, I mean, we, we gotta have a vote here, let's go.
We have a motion in a second, uh, on the table, all those in favor, signify the saying aye, I oppose no.
No. Wait a minute, what was the, no, I didn't vote because the motion was.
What?
His motion.
His motion. His motion, seconded.
Yes, I voted, but you, why would you vote no?
I did.
You voted for it.
Oh.
Well, it doesn't matter, if I vote for it, it's split, you, you decide, you, I might vote for it, split, two, two.
And I, of course, I will vote no. Motion's settled.
I, I just feel very uneasy about that, it's just.
Well, that's, doesn't prevent us from doing something and taking charge of doing something, because they're.
And Mr. Mayor, would you come back here and tell us what to do?
Did my best.
I want to, I want to hear you come up with a better idea.
How about rental car tax?
That was cute.
Yeah, and you know you were opposed to that, as, because we didn't have a.
I just can't believe, I can't believe that the mayor would oppose cleaning up this city.
Anybody that's in their right mind understood that, that's not what I said.
No.
That's not what I said.
That's how you, that's how you voted, that's not what you said, how you voted.
Can I ask, can I ask a question, Ms. McGrew?
What we're gonna have on that side.
Can I, can I, Mr. Mayor, can I ask Ms. McGrew a question?
Sure.
Sandy, I didn't understand, you were very uneasy with the decision, you didn't like it, I, I didn't understand that, you just said that.
We have a problem, but we don't have a, a solution that I'm happy with, because we don't have a clear-cut list of exactly how this money would be spent, we're taking money from our citizens and saying we're gonna clean up blight, and we don't have a clear set usage of what's going to happen.
We just voted it down.
You asked me why I was unhappy, and I'm answering your question.
Oh.
So, would you please get that list and bring a solution, considering it's your number one objective?
I would like to work on it with you, Mr. Huffman.
I'm, I've got mine, you'd work by yourself.
We've got discussions over it now, we're moving to the next item here.
Please.
All right, uh, in fact, Mr. Huffman, you're up again, discussion of registration of rental housing properties.
Can, can Chris talk, do, we, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta do something else here.
Okay.
Because that failed, he was trying to set that aside, it doesn't mean we affirm the fact that we are gonna really reduce the rates to dollars, you got a new motion to do that.
That's right, do we have a motion to reduce the fees by two dollars? You gonna keep them up there?
I don't think we're ready to do that tonight, I think that needs some more discussion.
Okay.
Same?
Okay, no motion, so we go.
Rates, the rates are gonna stay, rates was still the same, except for, except for the recycle bank reduction, that's it, that's all I mean.
Recycle bank is included in the rate, is that not correct?
Yeah.
So, there is no reduction, the rate is sixteen fifty unless you change it, that's the point I was trying to bring, you're, you're, the rate that we charge the customers is currently sixteen fifty, the proposal or requested analysis was based upon a two-dollar reduction to a rate of fourteen fifty, even though we are currently not staying in the recycle bank program and saving seventy cents on our costs, there is no separate line item billing that's to come.
So, it would have been just the seventy cents, it would have been, we really would have been reducing that dollar thirty or dollar, whatever.
So, tonight, we had a vote to not use the two dollars to clean up the blight, but we didn't reduce the rate, so we're gonna keep the two dollars, uh, for the time being, that's correct?
For the time being, that's, I'm continuing to you and, that struck me otherwise to bill at sixteen fifty.
I think we decided, or we asked, to bring that back up at the next meeting, I think that's.
Right, that's what, we'll, we'll bring the possible reduction up at the next meeting, no, we'll see, that's on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay, next item, Mr. Huffman, rental housing property.
Actually, I should have pulled that off, Mr. Mayor, because, uh, this was the plan to try to help that.
Okay.
You made a two-part motion.
I did make a two-part.
Was it, did you oppose two hours looking into it, because that was the second part of the motion?
The second part of the motion was to ask Mr. Cummings and Mr. Dyer and our police chief to look into how, to look at the ordinances to how best remedy the situation.
Well, I think, I think we would ask that anyway, but that part, if that was in the motion, it fails.
That's right, well, now I'm on the part, now I'm on the second part, that's not necessary to make a motion, we just need to ask them to do it, to take a look at it, and bring us some information back in the work session. Okay.
This ordinance, I will assist the city attorney with whatsoever staff is required to work with her.
I just wanted to add one point, uh, this afternoon, I got a call from a resident who's a property owner, and, uh, in the course of the conversation, I came up with one very serious concern I would have about anything to try to force, uh, property renters to register, if they have to get some sort of an annual registration certificate and pay a hundred dollars per year, that implies that if they fail to do that, their license will be revoked and they would have, they will no longer have a right to rent that property, is my, my assumption, that's what, uh, if, if you, if in the course of, they're doing business, they buy their rules or whatever, you pull the license, they can't get licensed, guess what, they have long-term leases with their renters for a year, two years, three years, and they are in a very awkward position of having to break the lease because they are no longer have the right, granted by the city of Canton, to rent their property out, now, I think we're trying to help Main Street, but I didn't think we were trying to help the lawyers on Main Street, because I have a feeling we'd have a flood of lawsuits because of that problem, that everybody would have, that is forced to comply with their rules for annual license and is a course of business, it's never gonna sync up with the annualized rental, uh, uh, license that you might be charging, you might rent your property in February, and guess what, and you're always gonna be out of sync even if you only do annualized contracts, so I, I think that's a real slippery slope that we would get into, and we have to look at some very serious issues before we'd, I'm not saying I disagree with what you're trying to do, Hooky, I just think that might be a very poor choice of doing it, and, and it was just an idea that came up while I was talking to this resident, and he hadn't thought of it, and I thought, well, that might be an overwhelming negative issue.
I think, I think, uh, the way I, the way I view that is registration is different in licensure, I think license, if you license them to do it, I think you're absolutely right, but if you require them to have a registration, I think if they don't register, then I think you just got a citation or something like that to become, because I don't think you can stop them from renting the property.
Well, I think the only thing you might want to consider is registration might, might be no charge, at least the purpose would be to at least know who they are.
Right, it is the old code.
That they have to register, but we're not enforcing it.
Exactly, because if somebody can, somebody walked down there and told them, don't collect that information anymore, it wasn't necessary.
But just something we have to look into, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, item nine A, discussion, action on resolution to submit twenty fifteen level of the center's initiative grant application, Mr. Cummings?
Yes, during the retreat, and also budgeted was thirty thousand dollars to do a, uh, city market analysis, uh, the trades are, I know it was facilitated by a representative from the ARC who suggested that we try to obtain monies from the ARC to, to do this, and we currently have an LCI area in the city, and in order to apply for monies, we need a resolution from council, so declaring that we want to apply for a grant, the grant would have two tasks, or if we did this whole study, would have two tasks, to prepare a central city sub-area master plan and prepare a central city market analysis, the total expenditure would be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the city's portion would be the budgeted thirty thousand dollars, and the request would be for the hundred thousand, we need a resolution before they'll consider the application, so we're, I'm asking for a motion to make that resolution.
We have a second, we have a motion in a second now, is it a twenty percent match?
It's, it's a minimum.
Of twenty, okay, okay.
We got a little bit bigger than.
Thirty thousand on our part.
Well, if it came back that the total cost was a hundred and twenty thousand and they granted us a hundred thousand, we could only have to contribute twenty thousand, but we do have thirty thousand budgeted, so we're allocating, uh, we're asking for the total of a hundred thousand, and we're exceeding the minimum that they require.
That's something we really needed in there, we need to move forward with that and get that underway, and hopefully, I feel pretty good that the grant will be successful with ARC there, so, uh, are there any, is there any other discussion?
Was there a motion seconded here?
Yeah, 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 we moved in second, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Seconded, it is.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, any other discussion, if not, those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, I'll be voting for the motion, okay, uh, new business item B, discussion, possible action, Marietta Road project addition?
Yes, I'd like a motion to approve an additional project on the Marietta Road streetscapes, I'll give an explanation before you make the motion because I passed out a handout, as everyone knows, we are currently, uh, paving Marietta Road all the way to John Pettit, and it ends there, we have in the budget for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, funds to complete that to the four-way stop sign from John Pettit to the four-way stop sign and including that intersection was planned to pave it, the current contractor, which was the lowest bidder on the project currently underway, has offered to do that at the same seventy-six dollars a ton, it's a total amount of thirty-one eight seventy-six, our best guess, if we approved this now, we could have upwards of twenty thousand dollars savings rather than remobilizing later in the fiscal year to do it, the reason that we're, we're doing this on short notice is because the contractor is a. is because the contractor is ahead of scheduling on the paving. We had not anticipated that they would be so far along, and they are ready to do it now. If we do not approve it tonight, they will demobilize and we'll have to go back and repeat this process at significantly, at relatively significantly greater expense. So, I'm asking the council to consider approving $31,876 sixty to finish the road all the way up to the four-way stop, including the intersection.
Do we have a motion?
Some more.
I have a motion. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Let me ask one question. Is this, this would be a separate contract and not a change order to the other, right?
This is, this is, this is separate contract because the original project was split with DOT, or GDOT. This is all city funds, this particular project.
Okay. Any other discussions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? I'll be voting for the motion. Okay, council introduced topics. Do you have anything else?
Yes, as a city manager, I do have these things. Let me look back there. First thing I'd like to is recognize our CFO. We have gotten from the Government Finance Officers Association a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. I'd like to read it if I might. The certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting has been awarded to the City of Canton by the Government Finance Officers Association in the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. Award of Financial Reporting Achievement has been awarded to the individual's department or agency designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning CAFER. This has been presented to Nathan Ingram, Chief Financial Officer, Finance Department, City of Canton. And I think it's quite an achievement to be at that level of reporting. The other thing I'd like to bring out at this time is that we have received our insurance, annual insurance premium tax in the amount of $1,238,288.52. This is $63,000 above our budgeted amount.
There's money, Hooky.
Next thing.
Make a motion or have somebody make a motion.
Go ahead.
The next.
And then you get your $2.00 reduction.
The next thing I'd like to bring out is we have a resolution from Mandy Ballinger, District 23, recognizing and commending the City of Canton Police Department and its officers. I could read the whole thing, but it's for the community. I'll just read the first one of different things that they have done. "City of Canton endeavors to provide the community with capable and reliable public safety." The last thing I'd like to say is a lot of others, many a lot of Facebook and everything about water billing and timeliness of posting. The general procedure in the past, although it had not been necessarily 100% adhered to, is the date the payment walks in this door is the date received in the Water and Sewer Billing Department. There are three methods or three basic methods of payment that we accept. We accept walk-ins, and that is posted immediately, has always been posted immediately. There are credit card payments. They are posted immediately, whether they are via the credit card system or whether they are via a telephone phone-in of the credit card. The third method is the mail-in system. The mail-in system could have had date delays in it. It was possible to have it. It was not very often that it occurred. We have implemented a new procedure whereby when the mail comes in the front door, whether it's done through a bank and they send a check to us or you send a personal check to us, the envelope is dated at the front desk where mail is separated and distributed to the department. All payments will carry the date of receipt, and that will be the posting date. That means any delay that's noticed or overdue is not due to the city procedure. It is the date it is received here. If a post office holds it for two weeks, we can't post it. If the bank, and most banks, do hold it, a total of seven days. Or it takes seven days to get to us. For example, on the 14th, we opened an envelope and from Wells Fargo, which contained multiple checks, and all of those checks were dated October 7th. So, but anyway, everybody should be aware, our posting date is date of receipt in this house, not three days later. If we can't, for some reason, cannot post it the same day, it still will carry the date of receipt.
Sounds good. That sounds good. That seems to resolve that problem, hopefully. Do you have anything else, Mr.?
No, I'm fine. Thank you, sir.
I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Political signs.
Oh, yeah. How about the mayor's report?
I don't have anything else on that.
Oh, no, I, okay. Councilor Deuce Adams.
Political signs. Mr. Rust.
I would like to make a motion that the city manager instruct the chief of police to withhold pulling any signs and enforcing any political signs that may perceive to be violations until 19 days from now or the day after the election. That's a motion. Andy has second.
We have a sec.
Sir.
Do we have any discussion?
I have something to say.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, you know, I, I think since we all have gone through this process and I spent four years on the UDC, and anybody that thinks I don't want to see that enforced is absolutely wrong. I wouldn't have spent that time if I didn't want it enforced. However, I think you got a 600-page document that's not posted on our website, and we're trying to encourage people to run for office, and then we throw a 600-page book at them and say, "Find the code that applies to political signs." I think last year, it was a little bit more gray. This year, it's a little less gray, but it's still gray. There's no clarity to what we're trying to do. It's unfortunate that the attempt to enforce the UDC came after one candidate had signs up to a month. Immediately when the second candidate puts up the signs, there's an attempt to enforce. There's a huge cry by a council member who used that grayness last year to make sure his signs did not get removed. And this year, he's crying to make sure in the same gray environment that the absolute black and white, which it is not, and it should be enforced. So, I'm saying right now, that's a real unfortunate situation. And I'd say that in, in, in terms of fairness, you gotta pull, instruct. I'm asking for the city manager to instruct the chief of police to not enforce that until the day after the election. And next year, we'll make it very clear.
Give that, have a motion in a second.
Yeah, if I may make a comment. I personally do not believe that I should be in a position to tell the police chief which laws to enforce and which laws not to enforce. That is a decision of the police department and the police officers to determine the severity of anything. As to the infractions they do enforce, the infractions that they give warnings, the codes they enforce, the codes they don't enforce. They have to make selective decisions because we probably have lots of violations that can go unnoticed because, or not addressed because of the priorities of more serious violations. So, I do not think that this is a good thing to do. I am in concurrence. If the chief chooses not to enforce this, I do support him under the basis that there are three different sets of rules available to the public relative to this particular issue. And we have set precedent in this council by pulling back the enforcement of our parking regulations, which I concurd with because we didn't have 50 spaces available. But I just don't think it's the city manager's position to tell the police chief what to enforce and what not to enforce.
Does it work for you? Does it work for you?
It does.
Well, who would take, who would take instructions from them? Us, council?
No, he takes instructions from written ordinances and laws.
Well, I'm glad you brought that parking issue up because we had a rule that looked like October 1st, we're gonna start enforcing parking. But for obvious reasons, we decided not to enforce that. Same issue. Who told him not to enforce that?
That.
Who told him not to do that? We, we decided not to do that, but who told him not to do that?
I believe, I'm not sure.
He just come here and listens and takes instructions from listening?
I was not present at the time of that. I just said that I concurd with that decision. I did not make that decision. I concur.
If you had been here, would you have told him to do that? Not to, not to issue tickets? He's waiting for instructions. You can't ask him to not have somebody telling him what to do. In this particular situation, in general, I agree with you.
Well, the first thing, if I might clarify that and let me go a little bit further. That decision should have been made in the middle of September. For some reason, the communications of that project or that street not being finished was not conveyed properly through the channels in order to make that a timely decision. I would have, if I had been there, would have, and if I had known in the middle of September, brought that issue to council. My recommendation would have been to enforce, actually, because we'd given them plenty of time. But again, I would not instruct. I would let the police chief determine what is the most critical violations that he needs to enforce. He cannot enforce everything. It's impossible. He's got three cars flying by a police officer, one doing 90, one doing 80, and the other doing 70. I can tell you right now, the one doing 80 and 70 are not gonna be enforced. The one doing 90 is. So, that is the selective process and choice of an accredited officer enforcement, not a city manager who doesn't have that.
Okay, if, if, if this, I have two questions. And if this motion were to pass, what happens to it? Nothing? And if you say, police chief, go out there and enforce the law. If you say to the police chief, "Use the codes, enforce the law." And he says, "You know what? I kind of agree with these guys. It's gray. I can't do anything." What would you, what would you want him to do?
If you pass this motion, I will instruct the police officer to use his normal sworn duties to enforce the laws as he is capable of doing on a most critical basis.
And I call a question. Let's vote.
We have a motion in a sec. And you want to repeat that motion?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna instruct the city, I'd like to instruct the city manager to instruct the chief of police to not enforce anything without signs, political signs, until the day after the election.
Okay. We had a motion. We had a.
It'll be a little late in the day, the day after the election, so somebody can get a chance to get them up. Go ahead. Yes.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. No?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries. The only concern that I have there is, is, you know, well, I guess that puts it back with the city manager. I was gonna say, you know, if we left it without the city manager instructing the police chief, it would be difficult, in my opinion, to put the police chief in a position where when people called and complained about a sign being somewhere, I mean, what's he gonna tell them? "I gotta go chase that speeder or I'll deal with it." Or, you know, I mean, I don't know. But anyway, that's where we are.
Thank you.
Okay, now, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, discuss litigation and.
Some more.
Other issues, and we will not be coming back out to.